We've got a special group here tonight from our Park and Rec Board Athletics Group, and I'm gonna let Scotty talk about that in a few minutes when we get started. And we're most delighted to have everyone come to the meeting tonight. Before we start our meeting, we normally have an invocation, and then we have our pledge of allegiance. So if you'd all stand together, we'll have the invocation person. Heavenly Father, we pause at this time to thank you for your great gifts that you give to this community. Lord, we thank you for your daily blessings, and we ask you to not to be especially with us in this meeting and guide our footsteps. Lord, we ask that you would always be with us in our meetings and keep us in your will. Father, we thank you for each citizen that lives in our community, and we ask the best rich blessings upon our community as we go forward in this life. Can I say a prayer?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of announcements I'd like to make before we start our meeting tonight. I was visiting this afternoon with a gentleman by phone, and he informed me that Highway 42, that would be what we call the Munciemare Highway, will be closing, I guess tomorrow for the repairs that's gonna be done. So if you have to travel Highway 42, you might be aware that there's probably gonna be a detour for a few months while they repair that section of road that's caved in over here. About three miles, but that lens is caved in, and they're gonna be fixing about a quarter of a mile section, I believe. So it'll be closed for a while. Our September, first September meeting of the council will be giving the awards gift to the school, $135,000. That'll be our next meeting, I believe, and we'll probably, tonight, I believe, we'll be changing the date of that meeting from Monday night to maybe Tuesday night, September 4th, we'll make that official during this meeting. We do have a team from Jax Restaurant with us tonight, and they'll be making a presentation later in the meeting, and we'll be hearing from them. And we appreciate those guys coming to leave this night on behalf of our guests. This time, we'll let Tim Kerr come and introduce our guest group, and then he'll turn it over to Scotty, I think. Tim, will you take the microphone?
This is our 12 member All-Star team that went and participated in the Alabama Recreation Department Association State Tournament in Children'sburg in July. And they finished second and got the sportsmanship trophy. So they really represented Hamilton really well, and we're very proud of them. And the team that finished ahead of them was several different tales, and all these girls are Hamilton girls, so something to be proud of. Scotty, who's the head coach, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank y'all for having us, and as most of you know, we were here last year about this time celebrating a state championship, and that was 10 years. So we moved up to 12 years this year, and we were the young group, but still, we were able to finish runner-up with the 12 year. And we'll see y'all back here next year, because every one of these girls are still ageable and will be able to participate next year. So I'd like to first of all thank Tim and Ryan Gilstrap and the rest of the staff at the Rec Center. They are, I'm telling you, I'm not saying this because they're here and it's because our field, but our fields are the best fields that we play on anywhere. And I think you see a lot of heads shaking, I mean, they are the best fields, best prepared, best managed fields that we play on, year in, year out. This wouldn't be possible without them, from the sign-ups down to registering us for the state tournament. They take care of all of that for us, and none of this would be possible without them. Also, the parents, every parent that you see in here after this team has helped in some way or another, even if it's just taking the book from me and handing it to the other person. You know even your... Every parent in here has somehow helped either on the field, off the field, during the season. And I thank y'all for that very much. Best parents anybody, any team could have. During the tournament, we started with 12 girls. Before the tournament arrived, we were down to nine girls. Then one of them broke her arm before the tournament, so we were down to eight girls. For those of you that don't know, we gotta have nine girls play. So we had to pick up two, and we had to pick, we picked up a 10-year girl that came and played with us. So when we got to the tournament, the reason we picked up an extra, we had girls that started getting hurt there, getting hit in the knees, having ice knees. We had one player having to get, I guess, a massage from fate in between innings because she'd hurt her back. So these girls fought through adversity the whole weekend. It was this tournament in Children'sburg, it was Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It was a three-day tournament that we were there. Before we go into the girls, I want to say, Tim alluded to this, they won the sportsmanship trophy. That's a big thing every year at this state tournament. Moves around from different cities in the state, and very, very proud of them for that. And I think everyone should give them a big round of applause for that, because I represent... All right. When I call your name, come up, we've got you a plaque and a t-shirt. Number one, Gracie Sanderson. Number two, KK Angles. Number four, Ryan Gilstrap. Number nine, Ella Kelly. Number 11, Riley Bodesman. And once again, thank you for picking up with us and helping us out. Number 12, Madison Metcalf. Number 16, Tesne Peoples. I want to say one thing about Tesne, she was the one that broke her arm before the tournament. And I'm not talking, I mean, it was a pretty serious break, and I think she has just now, this was back, when did you break it? In June, and I think she just got her brace off not too long ago, so thank you. Number 22, Gracie Childers. Number 24, Maggie Harbor. Number 30, Mia Hollisworth, and I will have your plaque tomorrow. And not here is Passy Lewis. Once again, thank y'all, and we will see y'all next year.
We want to congratulate this team, and we look to the big things next there. We're gonna live up to their years of age and abilities and hang in there and bring us that state championship trophy on next year. Thank y'all for coming tonight. You're welcome to spend the rest of the evening with us. We've got kind of lengthy meeting, if you've got all the time you can, if you don't, you can be dismissed.
Thank y'all.
Hello, Mr. Kerr.
Hey, how y'all doing?
Hi. Okay. We had those awards that we wanted to give to the team before, and give them some recognition by a group of park and recreation children that play their hearts out for us each year. Sometimes they bring home the trophy, the big trophy. This time they were runner-ups, but they know how to win, so we'll probably... We'll get started, and the first thing we'd like to do is recommend that we approve the minutes of the council meeting held on August the 6th, 2018. We need a motion to approve this minutes. The team made the motion within a second.
How second?
About seven seconds. All in favor of approving those minutes? Not opposed? Okay. Secondly, we'll make a recommendation to hold the next city council meeting on Tuesday, September the 4th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Due to the city hall being closed on Monday, September the 3rd, in observance of Labor Day holiday. We need a motion to move that meeting from the 3rd to the 4th. Kenneth made the motion within a second. Herb made a second, all in favor? Thank you. We'd like to announce number three, announce that the Recreation Board Member Matt Brazier will be reappointed to a three-year term that will continue on his term. It just expired in the last few days, and we want to re-upend that for another three-year term. He's a good board member, helps our Rec Department out a lot, and we're much, we're gonna continue to serve there. Before we go to Adam Thor, I'm gonna ask the council to move to a short executive session because of some matters we need to discuss before we go to Adam Thor. We'll need to go into executive session at this time. Tommy made a motion, we need a second.
How second?
Gene, second. We'll need to move into executive session, and Chief Vickery, we'll need you to join us in this session, please. Okay, all in favor of going into executive session? Okay. No, that is okay. This maybe won't take just a few minutes, we just have a couple of things we need to talk about that involve the possibility of some litigation, so we want to make sure that chairless first. This time, we'll need to make a motion to come out of executive session and go back into regular session.
I'll make a motion.
How second?
All in favor? Thank you. We'll need to back into regular session. Adam Thor on our agenda tonight is to announce the hiring of our latest police officer. That would be Ms. Macy Hughes, with what our city police force. By the way, you came highly recommended, you've got a lot to live up to now, I just want you to know that. We'll be needing to agree to pay her, so I'm gonna make a recommendation that we're starting paid the $16.36 per hour as a certified police officer. We need a motion to pay Macy.
I'll make a motion.
Kenneth made the motion, we need a second.
How second?
Gene, second, all in favor? Thank you very much. Item six would be the announcement of our holding a public hearing to recommend approval of a tax rebate for Jax Restaurant. And tonight, we're honored to have a group from the corporation that would be Mr. Jim Avery and Mr. James Hill and...
I'm sorry, I...
Will Aiken.
Okay. We're proud to have your group here, and we're just gonna give you some time to come and talk with us, and then we'll have others that might have some comments. Mr. Jim, we'll just start with you, if that's okay?
Okay. I want to introduce, first of all, my name's James Hill, I'm the attorney, I represent Jax. Appreciate y'all letting us come here today and meet with you and be a part of this public hearing. It's always interesting for me to sit through other council meetings. And by the way, I worked with your city attorney, Scott Hunt, and I've enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity to do that, but it's always interesting to sit through other meetings. Macy, I'm really glad they voted to pay you after they hired you. That would've been disappointing of them for Macy, but so that was great, that was great. But Jax is very excited about coming, the opportunity to come to Hamilton, and hope that we have that opportunity to be in Hamilton. The project itself is one that's of significance, and Jim can speak more to that. We're looking to invest over $2 million into the market. We're looking to be a significant, long-term player and participant and a community member of the city of Hamilton, and that's something that we're very much excited about and committed to. The mechanics of the proposed agreement are fairly simple, and it's fairly consistent with other such agreements that we have entered with municipalities around the state. And essentially, it's a 10-year capped agreement that's capped both again in time and also in potential rebate, and that's up to about $330,000. And there's a rhyme and a reason for that, and I'll let Jim get into the specifics behind those particular numbers, but it's a 50% tax rebate. So essentially, it's a, like I said, a real simple 10-year, 50%, capped at $330,000. And then again, that's a fairly consistent program for our retail investments around the state. We're excited to be here, mayor and council, I appreciate y'all letting us come, and speak to us a second. And like I said, Mr. Avery can get into some more detail, more regular level, about this investment. But thank you for letting us come, so just, Jim?
Good evening, folks. As James said, I'm Jim Avery, I'm the director of development at Jax. Really, we're here before you this evening, we'd like to, we'd like to come and, you know, operate our business here and be a welcome community member here. We're looking to purchase about 1.6 acres from Mr. Logan here, I believe is in the audience, and we're under option contract with him to do that. As we got into the development of this project, what we found was that the soil conditions weren't very good. And as we were going through our financial modeling of the project, and we did some geotechnical investigative work for the project, we found that there were substantial loofah soils in basically where we want to build. So our geotechnical engineer has recommended that we do some undercover work to remove bad dirt and fill in with good dirt so that we can build on it, and that's a pretty substantial amount. The information we've been given is anywhere to two to four feet that we'll have to dig down and replace, and then add to that another probably two feet to get to the design grid for us to actually build the restaurant on. So as we did our calculations with those numbers, and we went out to some earthwork contractors to help us understand what that was going to cost, that's really where that upbaitment number came from. And that's really what we're asking this evening is to help us with the investment of the project to get to the point where we can actually build on it. It'll be, gosh, 1.6 acres, we'll have semi-truck parking as a part of the project, and about 40 parking places for customers. It's a 3,522 square foot building with 80 seats inside. We'll employ at the start of the project anywhere from 50 to 60 employees, and that will, as we, of course, we always, we have an opening peak per se, kind of a honeymoon period for the new restaurant and the enthusiasm around that. Typically, that settles down after a few months, and we anticipate a steady state of about 45 employees. And then there'll be six managers on top of that, and the area manager that supervises the store. So we believe we'll be bringing employment to the city of Hamilton, certainly sales tax revenue to the city of Hamilton, and bringing a piece of property that isn't generating anything for the city now into generation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about our project.
How many of the 45 will actually be full-time?
There'll be, I believe it's about 20, 20 to 22 of those will be full-time, and the other will be part-time.
Did you deal with retail strategies?
We've had some communication with them, yes. We provided basically some of that financial information, we provided retail strategies to present to you.
Did, in the July 11th work session, what was presented then?
Well, we had learned that the, based on the model that they run, that they had a shortfall in the financial end, and they would be asking for cover over a period of years of portion of the monies that weren't in that model, and amounted to about $330,000.
That is correct.
And I didn't have the exacts on it at that time, but I had heard that they would be asking us for a rebate before the, which was finalizing. We didn't actually get to discuss it very much till last Wednesday at the work session, the retail strategies guys, Scott Van Kynen and John, some of the guys, came over and spoke with us at that meeting, kind of laid out the requests that you guys have from the city.
When the retail strategies first sent the letter in April, and we spoke back with them, did they give to you a copy of the ordinance that we have in place, our incentive ordinance that we have in place?
Yes, they did.
Okay. And with your original letter, you were asking for a 60-40 split?
Right, that was our very, that was our initial request.
And when they were here last week, they were still saying 60-40, but the newspaper was saying 50-50. So that's why, he did mention a 50-50 split, but he said that that would be over 12 years, but you're saying 50-50 for 10 years?
For 10 years, correct, right. And discussing with retail strategies and their discussions with you, that was where we kind of fought to agree that we'd come together, was 50-50 over 10 years.
Is that almost what you do with every town? A 10-year or 50-50?
Correct, that's a similar proposal that we have had and worked with with other companies.
I mean, I'm all for it, I'm the one who's stuck going out, and I guess in my mind, I was thinking, because the first I read this was when I was in the paper.
Okay.
About the 10-year, 50-50. And in my mind, it was a 10-year, that's what I was thinking. And for the undercut, that's pretty much your area company, I know I do that. And so when you go, properties like that.
Right.
That's gonna have to be done.
Right, yeah. And then it's just, it's, back to the financial part of this, is, you know, Jax has options to build in many places, and the extra cost for the dirt here could deter us from building further. So that's part of the reason for the request here, is that we've got other options, but we would certainly like to build in Hamilton if we can make that financially possible.
Well, I for one, sir, did I have you here, I had you registered here and welcomed you here, but I don't believe this council is interested in paying for a register to locate, and I don't know. We have a lot of registers now here, they locate it on their own. We have two that right now that's spending half a million dollars or more to upgrade theirs, they've never gotten anything. I had four registers here in Hamilton at one time, and I said, it was my bank that put me in business, and nobody's gonna give me anything to come and go in the business. Now, if it was something we needed out on the interstate, that's a different story, because we've been here now for 10 or 15 years and don't have anything out there.
Right.
And we'd certainly give you, you wanna go out there and locate with them where we really need it, and you're not going in business against people that worked all their lives here to get their business built on their own, and us to say, you've come in here and go in business against them? I just can't believe in that. And nothing against y'all or your restaurant whatsoever, because I've been in the business, I know how hard it is, and we'd certainly like to have you. And that's not it, but I just cannot sit up here and vote to give you a tax break when these other people are sitting there having a late throw-in. That's just my opinion, and I'm sorry, but we certainly want you here, don't think we don't, but I just don't see how I could, you know, I hope you understand.
Do you have questions from Mr. Avery? Mr. Hill, do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir, I think he touched on everything that we wanted to mention. And like I said, we are excited about, hopefully, having the opportunity to come in and bring in the additional employment, the additional tax base, and then certainly, if y'all had any questions, of course, your attorney's here, and I'm sure he could answer them. But if you had any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Y'all willing to negotiate a 10-year?
On the tax incentive?
Yes.
Well, that's certainly something we would have to consider. We were, the agreement that you guys had in front is certainly one that hasn't been worked through for a period of time, so we haven't worked the model on a different number. So this is the only one that I think that we've got approval for from the people that get to make these decisions.
What about that?
Okay.
You have a question?
See, I haven't seen you this. I don't know.
I, I don't know.
He couldn't be with us in our last work session. And he has been privileged to see the, the model.
Sure. Well, it needs a, it's a, like I said, it's a fairly standard concept. There's some findings that the city makes. Specifically, the findings are fairly above the threshold, essentially, of the projects, an economic development project. And then notwithstanding any benefit to any individual or entity, the project serves as an additional purpose. And then essentially, all it does speaks to the fact that Jax anticipates bringing in gross revenue greater than a million and a half dollars of sales per year, from which obviously you derive the, the tax base that we derive. And we intend to employ, like Jim said, upwards toward 45 additional employees at about 50-50 split, pulled down to part-time, like, like you mentioned earlier. And then go through the machinations of the, the 50% rebate from the sales taxes collected from the, from the city towns.
Yeah, suppose we get a 10-year 50-50. Let's not say that you're going to leave.
Sure.
You know?
I think they've already left here class.
And that's, that's a great question. And, and that's actually a question that we address regularly in cities and often now to courts when these are validated. But the, the agreement itself is specific to our restaurant. So to the extent that a restaurant ceased to do business, a property was sold to a different retailer or a different entity altogether, the agreement would cease to be effective. So it's tied specifically to that piece of property and to this particular, particular business. So if any of that ever changed, then the, the agreement would just be nullified.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Sanderson asked a question about, or mentioned that you incentivized businesses to go on the interstate. Because I understood it, there had been some recent incentives provided for gas station operations going in-town, is that correct? And those were in-town, not at interstate?
Truck stop.
Okay.
Yes. And only reason was for their building out on the interstate too. Only, we didn't have anything on the interstate.
So they're going on the interstate at the same time?
Soon as they finish with this, we got a contract with them, we give them nothing to leave them both again.
Okay.
Everything was contingent on him building on exit seven. The only reason he got any help downtown was because he was the first one that was willing to help us get something going on exit that has no buildup at this time.
We hadn't had anything out there. And I know how long the interstate's been here.
Oh, yeah.
We're the only town.
We study all those exits.
There's no stations or anything on it out there. So we were looking for, trying something out there.
Three years in-town and five years on the exit.
Okay. And then there, there was also a mention of Jax being here before. They were here one other time and that was a prior ownership years ago. So the company sold 2015 to new owners.
I thought it didn't really fly. So I was, now I'm just going with what I was told.
Or Burger King.
Yeah, okay. I knew it. Here two times before and left the company. And that, you know, it didn't like to see him, so I don't know. We, we haven't given anybody a, a register. And we got people right now, like I told you, that have come in and spent over half a million dollars, great words, McDonald's, Burger King, they've asked us to make it. They come in and did this. But to me, we'd not be doing them right. And if you were in their place, we'd not be doing you right if we did that. But we're not looking right now, I don't think, for food places. We have food places. We're looking for something else, especially out on the interstate.
Keep that in mind with other clients, too.
Yes, we'd be good at it.
So no restaurants or anything?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I'm not going to anything right now. I said anything.
Oh, I thought you said no restaurants.
No, I'd say.
I represent restaurants. That's why I was asking.
It's just a 10-year half, you know? Regardless of the interstate, that is, I don't care either way. It's just a 10-year half and half.
No, I know this is probably an under question, sir, given the fact that how, how we am extorting our people. Are you suggesting a different model?
Than?
Than that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I said. Is this a negotiable, I mean, is this a final deal?
Well, it has been. I guess that's what Jim was speaking to earlier, was the, originally it was, we saw a 60-40 split. And it had been negotiated to that 50-50 point. And again, I'm sure largely that was working with your consultant, retail strategies. So I'm sure that's, and that's why, I assume that's why y'all engaged now. But, you know, a couple of things that I might mention, I hear Councilman Sanderson's doing, and it's well taken. Certainly, Jax's $2 million investment's a very significant investment in the community. And certainly, we feel as if we provide a very unique product of this. It's a, it's a, it's a product that will be well-sociated in Hamilton. We feel like this would be a, a good market for us. And we, we hope to be a, a good, like I said, community member for the, for the city and for the surrounding area. And I do think it's pertinent that, certainly, that the market that, that Jax tends to market is, is different than the market that other restaurants tend to market. You know, our, our average, our average customer is, 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 is adult customers and, and older customers. And so we market it to a different crowd and our product is we try to service, certainly.
Who was in business down there?
Well, great. We, we certainly hope we get the opportunity to go.
I guess my point is, 10 years, when I'm getting at, 10 years, you're going to tax the sales tax. All these other restaurants, they're going to be feeding Jax. For 10 years, we're going to be losing half our sales tax. You see my point?
No, I do see your point. And that, that was why I was trying to drive that. The Jax product is, is one that we are confident is not a direct capitalization of other similar type fast casual restaurants. It markets to a different clientele. It hits a different demographic. It provides a, a service that is, that is not homogeneous and not synonymous with other fast casual restaurants in, in the field. Which is why, which is why I would say that, that, that those tax dollars are not actually going to be capitalized from other existing fast casual restaurants.
I don't believe that. I think, I think the rest, they're going, I know some people will eat at Jax and won't eat somewhere else. But when you go into a fast food restaurant, we cannot get into business. And nothing against that, I promise you, but we can't get in to giving tax rates for restaurants. We have registers here. We're looking for something else. We don't need to cut into McDonald's, Burger King, you know, it's never gotten a nickel. And they've confessed, like you say, their $2 million, twice here, and didn't get anything, didn't ask for anything. So why, there's other people coming in and want to ask and go into competition against them. I mean, I can't see that. I was in my own business. But I was in my own business and had nothing with the bank to borrow the money from and take, work 16 hours a day and coach and teach school and try to pay for it. And I was successful at it. And I'm proud. That's the way I got the stock. But I didn't have any help.
Sure.
So here we come now with the big money people, and they're going to pay. Instead of people like me that started with a manager that was my coach in high school, I couldn't even borrow the money to start with in my own business. So I know that. It's hard work.
Yes, sir.
But still, that's not, in my personal opinion, we want him to, we want him to come, but we don't need to put him in competition with other people here. It's in the same business, a lot of them. We're not talking about just two businesses in competition. We're talking about probably 10 businesses that we would put them in competition with. It's never gotten a nickel. And, and I'm not against, I'm sure I understand, I'm against you. We want you to come. We want you. And any other way, we can hit you, we will. But I, I don't think this, we'll give you taxes because then what's going to happen? I guarantee in the next six months, without fire on them, could we tell them no?
Sir, I think you have to make this on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah. Yeah, I hate, we want you, we want you back in the town. We can't, I, I just don't, that's my personal thing. I just don't feel like we can do it and be fair to these people.
Are you under the impression that retail strategies negotiated from the 60-40 to the 50-50?
I am under that impression.
Yes.
Have they been?
That was our question.
Right. Should retail strategies, who did that negotiation?
I talked to Scott Van Canon and I told him that the 60-40 didn't sound feasible to me. And that I'd have to get a vote from the council for anything to happen. But I did talk to him about, he said, what about if it was a 50-50, would they go for that? I said, I don't know. I can't speak to the council. I said, the council will have to vote on any of those.
I'm just a little confused because when retail strategies was here the other day, this is the letter that they presented, which is still the 60-40 split. This is the April letter and the breakdown. And this is what they presented. Now, he did show another model that was a 50-50 split, but it went for 12 years. So that's why, and he made it clear that he was the messenger. So that's why I'm trying to figure out who did the negotiation.
Sure. Okay, we'll speak to that. That's, that's will decide that letter. He took the letter I had, I'm sure.
So I'm the real estate broker and one of my clients, the privilege of working for Jax and other restaurant groups. And so when we came up here to Hamilton, we canvassed the market, we found a property owned by Mr. Logan and several other people. We called on, we flipped over all the stones. Once we did the geotech, we realized we had a shortfall. And that's when the letter was drafted to the city. I think I might have spoken to the mayor once or twice. And then I had talked to, I guess it's guys from retail strategy always call me and want to know where we looking to put stores for Jax or Aldi or any of our clients or Olive Garden or Longhorn and any of those. And so I said, so they said, we have a contract with Hamilton. So I said, okay, well, I'll, I'll send a letter to you guys and you can send it to the mayor. And so in April, I drafted that letter as a proof on Jax and submitted that to retail strategies. And then I was told, submitted it to the city, to the mayor.
Right.
They came back to us, I believe it was July 7th, and stated that they didn't think the 60-40 would work, but 50-50. And they wanted some more background, or some more material, basically, to present the case. And want to see a pro forma for the, the location. And so Jax produced that pro forma, and that's the spreadsheet or the analysis that you've seen, the detailed analysis that was then sent back. And after that was sent, we didn't hear anything else until last week, after they came to the face of a work session or whatever you guys had. And we heard the results of that meeting and said, no, we're here today. So that's the extent of the conversation, of how it occurred. Really, not much has happened in that time period, which we have, same was requested and, you know, go through process.
This is a public hearing. We have other guests here that may have interest. Do you have an opportunity to address the, the council nearby? Any others? Scott, do you have anything you want to add?
I do.
We, we actually have this for public hearing and, and for the possibility of bringing this to the vote. Does the council wish for you to head with a vote tonight?
No.
Yes. Go ahead and vote tonight. Y'all want to go ahead and vote tonight?
Six.
Yeah.
10-year, 50-50?
No.
That's all we're voting on?
No. We're voting on whether we will give a tax rebate or not here.
10-year, 50-50?
Nothing.
That before we?
I make a motion, we vote to not give a rebate at all. And vote tonight.
I'm second to that.
But that's what you're asking for, 10-year, 50-50?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the agreement that's, that has been prepared.
I'm making a motion, we don't give one at all.
I'm second to that.
Come, most in a second. Any discussion? Those who would vote to not give any abatement at all to Jax Restaurant, you need to raise your right hand. At three. Those who would consider a 50-50 abatement for 10 years.
Or opposed to the motion. Or just opposed to the motion. Or just opposed to the motion. It doesn't have to be for something separate, you can vote to oppose the motion.
Okay, those opposed.
I'm opposed to the motion of not entertaining a separate idea.
We had three opposed to any abatement. I voted yes for the abatement. And we have two that were.
Three for those.
Okay. So at this point, we would not be able to approve an abatement for Jax Restaurant. And the reason I voted yes is that when I took this job, I agreed to grow Hamilton by some means. And I think it's a worthy business. I have to vote to bring business to Hamilton. I'm sorry if it steps on some toes. We don't have a Jax now. And I think Jax has a different menu and a different group of people that would like to eat there. So that's why I voted yes to, for the abatement. It didn't carry, guys, and I'm sorry that we couldn't see a fit to make you an abatement here tonight.
We're certainly not against you. But I'm not against you. I voted against you. But I just think you should, that, just like you, that's the register, I'm sorry, I just didn't. I just can't see punishing the people we got here.
I'm going to stand for what I believe is right in every matter, no matter what other people think. I'm going to do what I think is right for the citizens of this community. I believe that we've got to grow this town by getting new business. I'm going to be pro business. And in this case, I had to be for the abatement. So I'm just telling you why. The other guys, I'm feeling about putting people into competition against people that's already here. And that's a good point, well-taken. But when I was elected to this job, I said, I'm going to try to make Hamilton grow again. And I thought this was a wonderful opportunity. It may be a deal breaker. I'm not sure what we've done here tonight. But at any rate, it is what it is.
I'd like to answer to that. We were elected here for another reason, too, to be fair to all the people, especially the people that live in Hamilton now. And the people like the restaurants we have here now that paid the wrong way here. And us not to go in and put somebody in competition against them. And I don't think that's what we were elected for, even that.
I saw it down in town when I was elected. I want to grow it. I want new business here. And, you know, that's just the way I feel about it. So I can't just go alone and say no every time that, that is on the list.
Well, I can vote, but I sure like Jax.
I got one here.
Yeah, I can vote.
I'll go over Sunday. I'll pick you up on it.
Hey, Mayor, can I say something? The owner, talking about the gas stations out on the interstate and his hip, and our local people, I mean, I don't know where, what he's doing in your way out, but on the field file, he, he built a station out there and reworked one on the interstate. He's got one down here across from the one coming in. And he's probably spending a million dollars over here on 278 right now. Are we giving him the same tax break we're giving these people down here?
He's never asked us one.
Well, don't you think it would be respectful to go to him and ask him if you could help him?
I have.
I mean, I'm just looking out for our local people.
I have talked to it. I have talked to Phil.
He don't want to break?
He had first ch, first turn.
He got first choice at all, that is.
I'm just asking, I mean, I was curious because I know he spent a lot of money and he built several stations. I'm wondering what he's doing.
That's the way things get mixed up.
Yeah, I mean, that's the way you find out, you ask.
Yeah, that's the best thing to do, instead of like some more people I know of not coming to the council meeting and find out what's going on.
Yeah, that's why I asked, I mean, I just want to know where we stand.
Okay, we're past that issue. The number seven is an item that we have a contract with Retail Strategies that was for a twelve month renewal. It's time for us to either vote to renew that contract or discontinue the contract with Retail Strategies. I make a recommendation that we renew for another twelve months at the cost of the city of forty thousand dollars per year.
Mayor, what have you, I know we've talked a little previously about hiring an individual and I learned a lot from the Retail Strategies meeting the other day. These men have provided a lot of information for the city, probably far more than any of us realize and have put a lot of things out there on the internet for other people to see. What are your thoughts on, as I mentioned, an individual or somebody local that would work with them? I mean, we have all this information out there now, but I'm still a little confused as to how all this went down and I'm sorry that the vote ended up as it did. I was very hopeful that we could put this off and I would have a little time to think and try to get everything sorted out because I'm still confused. Retail Strategies said the other day that they were simply the messenger. So that's why I'm confused as to where the negotiations actually happened. I understand that the mayor does negotiate contracts and things and with them saying they were simply the messenger, but yet, you said you were under the impression that they did the negotiations. I'm a little confused as to just exactly how everything has gone down. I do think the Retail Strategies, I was against them three years ago, to last year when we voted and they asked for three years, I was against them. But I have seen what they have done. I honestly don't think, I know that I don't understand all that they are doing for the city and all of their networking and everything that's going on. I think if we had an individual that worked just with them, they would be, it would just be a better mesh than the way it's working now. So before we decide on hiring, rehiring, continuing our contract, whatever you want to call it, what are your thoughts as far as as an individual locally to work with them? Somebody, so there's not the confusion that there was tonight. And I, I mean, I was not at the July 11th meeting, my son had a dental emergency and I was gone. When I read about this in the newspaper, I was going by the letter from April the 19th and it says one thing, the newspaper printed another. And then when Scott and the rest of the men were here on Wednesday, you know, they referenced this letter and the ten years, but Jeff, they showed us the fifty fifty, but it was with twelve years. So, you know, it's all not matching up. It's just, it's just not matching up. So what are your thoughts? I mean, is that even a consideration?
Well, obviously, to hire an individual, that brings on a whole new ballgame and that most individuals are going to need to work for their family and they're going to want a salary that's going to probably well beyond what we're paying Retail Strategies to work for us. They'll have benefits in addition to that, like insurance, retirement, those things, a vehicle. So it's just something that we need to ponder more and if we want to postpone this vote again tonight, we can.
Well, I personally don't think, and again, I was against it. Y'all all voted for them last year and I was against it. But I'm sort of grasping a little bit about what they're doing and how they're working and I see, I see the potential there, but I think there's some communication that's lost. And I think there needs... And I don't know how to handle it.
Well, the first thing I did like about Retail Strategies is that we couldn't get on the phone and talk. We had to have Basecamp, you got to log in to get anything off the computer. It's just, you're a little bit removed from getting direct communication. But the organization itself, I think, is a very valuable organization. I think they can do the work, I think they're ready to produce some fruits. They've already introduced our community. I think we're going to see some good things out of them this coming year. I just feel like to work a year with them and to not renew this contract, that would be a big mistake.
I'd just place somebody on there. You know, if they're going to premise something in, the fruits of it, I don't see it. And then if they're going to do a negotiation of a ten year, every time they bring something in with a fifty fifty split, I just don't see it. If this is all going to offer.
But I'm thinking that might be where there was a little lack of communication. Maybe, maybe there's a gap somewhere.
They weren't the ones proposing that stuff, they were just the contractor.
Right. And that's pretty much, you know, what he said, we're the messenger. So, so I...
That's all the one they presented to us.
I guess my point is, I...
I presented something, yeah.
Forty thousand.
So I get a second.
We pay forty thousand a year, then we go to a ten year, fifty fifty year sales tax. That don't make sense. No business would do that. You can't run a business and survive doing that. It just ain't going to work.
So they have to fix sell, fix sell something, is that?
There you go.
Yeah, but ten years, that's the catch.
It's not, that you ain't getting it now.
I don't know, I swear I look at it, I don't know.
Have you talked with them about being more present?
Not really. I can log into Basecamp and get the information. It's just a lot of aggravation to me to have to go through all those passwords and what have you to get information, I like to get it right here in my email, you know? Just tell me the facts and then we'll get on with it. There was some stuff lost in communication between me and them. He said, I sent you this so and so, well, he wound up sending it to Scott then. I still haven't reviewed the package. And he said Scott's had it several days. Well, I didn't know that. When I found out Scott had it, then him communicated, said, yeah, I've got the package. So there was a lot lost in communication too. I looked for lessons, I really need it. So for that, I apologize, you know, it's just the way it is. I think, I still think Retail Strategies has something off of the city. I won't vote on it tonight, whether we stay in or get out. We're drawing lines in the sand tonight, so let's just draw another. I'm going to recommend that we renew our contract with Retail Strategies for twelve more months. And I won't call it till vote. Let's have a motion in a second so we can vote on this one. Attorney, what does that mean when we don't get a motion?
We can bring it up again later.
You want to do this too?
We can bring it back up. We can bring it back up later.
Okay. We have a motion to bring it back to the table later.
I don't think we have to do that, do we? Nope, it's just, it just dies.
All right. We're having a funny meeting tonight. Item eight would be a recommendation to extend a sewer line located behind the new businesses located on 43 South. That would be to accommodate Mr. Sibley and to accommodate Jaxx. We have a engineered line, is Rodney here tonight?
No, he's not.
Okay. It would be to come across the back of Jack Clark's property. It would accommodate Sibley Oil Station and the Jaxx Restaurant. There's no sewer, but well, it's on Knight Street, so it has to come up there to those businesses.
So it'll be on the perimeter of the block, not actually on private property?
It'll come across, we've got an easement from Jack Clark to come across the back of his property and accommodate Sibley Oil and Jaxx Restaurant.
And how much is this going to cost?
Forty-nine thousand.
Who's going to do the work?
The engineered firm out of Hayley Hill.
And so what's, is that the total cost?
Yes.
The engineering, the...
How about the retirement center back there?
All right, that sewer line goes to the retirement center, that's one we'll be tapping into, but it's got to come across Jack Clark. He didn't want us to tear the front of his parking lot up there, so he's given us a right of way to come across the back and bring the sewer and to Sibley and a manhole will be there behind Jaxx Restaurant.
Scott, is this, I mean, typically, do we not go around the perimeter of the property and then the landowner is responsible for the easement and the connections from the perimeter to the project?
Typically, we try to stand right away. In this particular case, that's not possible.
It's not possible?
Well, it's to best serve the property owners, so we had to get an easement to come, to extend our sewer line.
I'm, I will, and I'm sort of, you don't have a picture.
Rodney's Sibley, the draw, and Sibley's still real versus twenty thousand.
Now, is that line, will that take, who am I talking to?
I guess you're talking to me.
That line we're speaking of, sewer line, will that take care of all of, if they go ahead and build a station and all of them, let it care of all of that property down there? If somebody wants to devote the rest of it, we've got to have that sewer line running up through us. Okay, I make the motion. We do it.
Right, wait a minute. Sibley's going to reimburse?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, and as I understood, Jaxx agreed to do the same take on them. So we'll have nine thousand coming across Jack Clark.
Well, you know, I'm going to mention this, you know.
Did y'all agree to this?
Sometimes it's not fair to run the sewer line up to there, the two of them pay for all of it, unless that property they're running across, if anybody ever hooks up to it in the future, they'd have to pay their part of it. I've had this come up before and it's not right for the people up there in front to pay for it and then somebody put on from there back down and they get free. Because I'd like to...
Well, they more capacity.
You know what I mean, I mean, I want to be fair, if somebody else builds back there, they'd have to pay their part for the sewer. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I saw this happen, happened before, where somebody even out in the country would build a sewer line and then they got it down at the end of the road, the others up above the road, they didn't pay anything and they were coming to it, and I'm sure they did later on. And this is what we're talking about, going across commercial property there. Anybody hooking on to it in the future should have to pay their part of it. Can you do that, lawyer?
Sure.
I'll understand for it then.
Now, explain to me one more time, the sewer goes in front of the retirement center currently? Yes or no? Where is the sewer?
I'm not for sure why you're asking me where the sewer is.
I think for sure it's either in front or it's down...
That would say the future. It's behind the AT&T building. Is it on, this is...
Somebody else had it.
Somebody else had it, still with the sewers. Is it, when you say behind the AT&T building, it is not on that property? Is it on the side street?
It's thick enough on Knight Street, that's the road between the church and the AT&T. So it's thick enough to get a gravity flow there, and that's the only place we can get gravity flow. The engineers have already looked at it and designed it for us and it's the only place they can get a deep enough gravity flow to put it in and make it work. Yes, sir, that should work.
Okay, so that easement is going behind the AT&T building?
Yes.
It's going...
Jack Clark's giving it.
Okay, and it's going through the Sibley property?
Yes, and only up to accommodate Jaxx.
Is it going behind the, the radio station and what we're doing? And are we going all the way up for the potential development or...
It's the point, we're just taking care of the ones that are voted, but it's got more capacity.
There'd be a manhole on the radio station property on the bank right there.
Okay. So...
It will have...
Would it be cheaper to bore a hole and run it through? Hear the sound of the interstate, road? I know we've got, you know, white people, sewer on that other side of the road, they run from over there.
Are y'all still willing to talk?
Us, absolutely, we know anything. I would like to say everything, I know about sewer over there, top.
No, I mean, are you, are you still willing to talk, even though the vote is going as it is? Or are y'all pretty much out of the ballgame and the sewer's not going to be going that far?
Yeah, we're going to have...
This is where I'm getting, this is where I'm getting, you know, I mean, if, if they're out of the ballgame, are we going to vote to carry the sewer still that distance?
You're going to need it sometime.
Right, well, see, that's why I'm asking why we need y'all to vote.
There's a plan.
Nice.
I'm here to serve.
Thank you.
Despite y'all's votes. Here's sewer around here. So it's coming back over here, I don't have a lot of view.
I'll let it continue here not to answer your questions.
I would like to thank the mayor, is it Rodney? At this sewer department, they were really good to help us find a solution for this because it was a struggle, you know, a lot of cities already have easements along the front in place, so you don't have to deal with private owners and expedite things. And in this case, you guys don't have that and we're having a difficult time with private owners, so they were really helpful.
So sewer's already over on that side, of course, Trade School's over there, College is over there.
We had to have private owners cooperation.
Well, I had a problem on down the road, sewer was on the wrong side of the road. And I had to try to go under the road. That's been quite a...
Rodney said he could be here in a few minutes if y'all are eager to come. He's at the Rodney Williams, if he needs to come by and explain anything, he said he could.
Do we have to decide on that?
Well, they wanted to get in business, and we wanted to be in business.
I will say that without the sanitary sewer, I can assure you that we can't come to Hamilton.
Okay.
All right, I second, let's get everybody's.
We'll run the sewer, I make the motion. I make a second.
Alfred, I do the sewer line work. I'm going to get it ordered for you.
Thank you.
Any other business coming for us tonight? We have a motion...
Now, I got two, I got one simple one, I guess, but it may not be simple. Steps on the, really, I mean, how? The water, water. Steps, the kids go up on, they're falling. When they get them on...
Splash pad.
Splash pad. Yeah, the steps, the kids getting out of the water, and they're going up these steps, and they're falling there, the little steps they're going up, there's no kind of water there. I don't know, I ain't never been on the steps, so I don't know. I've just heard two, three people have called us.
And some rubber rippers on the steps.
Yeah, before next year.
Yeah, the kids are getting...
Probably, yeah.
They're rubbing on the steps.
Something so they aren't slick, something that their feet will rip through, some kind of... Either like a rubber, like you would have in your shower, so you didn't slip, some kind of... Or so, I don't know, something so they don't slip.
Without a motion, we would tell them that.
And one more thing, the bridge, and we're talking about the bridge, Cameron's place. We heard it time, found it every time. Can we clean up in the bridge without finding out? Stuff is washing up at the bridge, surely nobody will say anything about cleaning up the bridge. Because I voted to this one thing, to get this track over for this very purpose. And it's got to be done before it starts raining.
Right.
And it's dry. So, I mean, it's got to be cleaned out.
Come on down around the right bend, bridge goes backward. Then they clean that around there.
And when you get on the stage, you need about thirty to section it. Mine's still dry.
It's better to do it tonight or tomorrow.
I'm talking about, I'm going to travel with it.
We can't do the whole project, we could clean around the bridge. The state said that could clean around the bridge, but we can clean around our bridge too. And we'll do that.
Mr. Mayor, before you leave, thank you so much. You're a great staff, for your kindness in the death of my son, and to the Hamilton Police Department, and I beg your, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Janice, we were sad that that happened to your family. We wanted to help where we could.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Janice is one of our, she's our fan club, and we appreciate her. She's been through a lot, I wish we held her up in our prayers. Anything else tonight? Scott, you got anything to present tonight?
No, sir.
We have a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to get a motion.
My motion, you got a second? I'll vote. Thank you. Appreciate y'all being here tonight.